Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance with me. We thank you, Lord, for bringing us together this morning with the focus of our students and our community at the forefront of our minds. We ask, Lord, that you give those of us sitting up here wisdom and those of us listening, watching, and so involved in this college on a day-to-day basis, the wisdom and the guidance to move us in the direction that would be best for St. Petersburg College, for Pinellas County, for our students, and for all of those who dedicate so much time to this institution. We ask, Lord, that you allow us to show mercy to others like you show to us, and that you would sharpen us and give us wisdom and change us as we go through tough times and great times together. It's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to start off this morning with a presentation of retirement resolution, and I'd love to invite up Ms. Nancy Kelly. We're doing it on this side today. Yes, thank you.
I don't know who's working today, but got the whole I see. Come on over. Come on. My dearest Nancy, resolution. Whereas Nancy Kelly came to St. Petersburg College in 1996 as the Student Activities Coordinator on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus, and whereas Ms. Kelly's exceptional leadership skills led to a promotion in 2000 when she became the Advising Manager for Student Affairs on that campus, and whereas Ms. Kelly transferred to the downtown campus in 2009 to become the Counselor in Charge and serve as a liaison for students on that site, and whereas Ms. Kelly, an innovative and motivating leader, accepted a promotion to Associate Provost at the Caruth Health Education Center in 2012, where she provided honest and unwavering support to both students and staff until her recent retirement, and whereas Ms. Kelly has, over the years, served St. Petersburg College with enthusiasm and dedication, and the college has greatly benefited from her talent, ingenuity, and exceptional communication skills, she will be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college family community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Nancy Kelly and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 19th day of February 2019. Everyone, Nancy Kelly.
Thank you very much. I think everybody knows how wonderful it is to be at SPC, but I graduated from SPC. My son is here. He graduated. All of my brothers and sisters graduated, so it's kind of a tradition. And then I have to tell you, the last year spent at Allstate has been very special to me. I've only spent two days here, but my dad was the Claims Manager, Regional Claims Manager here many years ago at Allstate. So it's kind of like full circle, like I've come home, and every day I would walk through, I'd think, my dad was here. And I used to go and have lunch with him in that round building, because that used to be the cafeteria. So I want to thank all of you. I mean, this is what 23 years looks like, wonderful people to work with. Dr. Williams, I want to thank you because you have brought back the atmosphere of caring, which you know, 20 years ago, that's what we were about, that's who we are. Not only do we care about our students, but we care about our friends and our employees, and we just become family. So thank you, because you've brought that back. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Big crowd.
Yeah.
Thank you again, Nancy, for your career here in service, and we'll move on to the comments, and I'll start with a few comments that I've gathered over the last month. First of all, I wanted to thank the Leadership St. Pete College Group for having me, what was it, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whenever that was. I really enjoyed our time together, speaking, answering questions, hopefully not putting anyone to sleep with those answers, but what a great dedicated group to make the commitment to do more and to be a leader, both in the community and within this college itself. I know it's a lot of work, but it seems like we had a great class this year, and so I thank you again for having me and inviting me. Always enjoy that. Also, thank you for the invite to the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. I had a blast throwing beads off of the float, which we weren't allowed to do, but I did anyway, and it was a very fun time. And then also, I want to thank FGO, Shannon in particular, for the 5K that they put together again this year. Great event, well-attended, well-organized, as we know things would be with that group of leaders there. I had a blast, and I think everyone else did too. We couldn't have asked for better weather. Fantastic event to raise some money for scholarships, so thank you to all who were involved with that. Finally, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the board here and also Dr. Williams. I attended a Chamber of Commerce luncheon last week with the St. Petersburg Chamber. We had quite a few legislators from Tallahassee there, a couple of our local state senators, and also representatives, and everyone had great things to say about St. Petersburg College. Everyone was excited about how they can work with St. Petersburg College in the years to come, and everyone commented on how involved and how many conversations are happening right now, both with Dr. Williams being right in the middle of those and also our board members sitting around me here. So I thank you all for your time and dedication to that. Word is getting out. We are there. We are at the forefront of what's going on, and we're here to be involved with our community and help in any way we can. So thank you all for that. And with that, I'll open it up to any comments from the rest of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, Ms. Bello and myself went to Washington DC with Dr. Williams in the ACCT Legislative Days, and we had great meetings with legislators. It was well-organized. Dr. Williams and his staff should be commended on the job they did in terms of setting up meetings and some other things to talk about our priorities moving forward. We met with Senate staff, and we also met with, I think, three or four congressional members, and they were very, very, very good meetings. The other thing is, on the day of service, money that we give out, I went out to one of them, Misty Kemp was there and some other folks, a veterans event they had at the Enig Davis Center, very well done. I thought that that event, I didn't go to all of them, I thought that that event was needed as a job fair and a career-like fair for veterans, so just wanted to commend her and her staff on doing a good job with that, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll echo some of what Devron said. First of all, I would like to lobby ACCT to not do it in February in Washington DC. It did snow on us while we were there. That was the fun part, right? The rain, not so much. But I do need to call out Jackie and Erid and Dr. Williams. I was very, very proud to be associated with the college. We are well-represented, well-represented from a government affairs perspective, you know, obviously locally and statewide, but nationally, it was a very cool experience. So Erid and Jackie, I don't see where she is if she's here, but she's not feeling well. I was proud. I did sit in one particular session where I was kind of by myself, and it's something that we talk about a lot, so I took really good notes, and I'm going to be quick about them. I shared them with Dr. Williams last night, but it was called Improving Access and Success for Males at Urban and Rural Community Colleges. So the notes that I took were that there's a very progressive college in Texas that no longer requires a high school diploma for admission. They feel like that's removing one of the big barriers for a lot of potential students. They do earn their high school diploma while they're going through their two-year process at the community college, but I thought that that was something interesting to maybe banter about. They also have food banks at every campus, which I did not know prior to saying, why don't we do that, that we do do that? So if you guys didn't know that, we do. They have childcare at every campus, the whole theme being removing all the barriers for these students. They pay the bus fare, and I know we do that also, but he, this one college president was actually able to get a different part of the county government to cover the cost, and when we talked about that, that would be a significant savings for us if we could do that. So I'd say we have a conversation with him and find out how he did that. And one final thing was bringing the community to the college, and you know, this one president talked about doing concerts. I was like, I don't know about that necessarily, but as students walked, or as people walked onto the campus to get to the concert, it would say, welder, $55,000 a year, six-month certificate program, you know? Pipe fitter, $75,000 a year, three-month certificate program. And if you're getting people who aren't coming on campus to see things like that, and they go, I can do three months for $75,000 a year, so. There was just some really cool suggestions that I wanted to share with you guys that came out of that, so thank you for allowing me to go and represent the college. I was very proud.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add to that. I know the president who did that presentation, and I spent a lot of time talking to him about that, and I think Ms. Bello hit on an excellent point, but one of the things that's important is that when the people come to those campuses, they have to see somebody they identify with, that it looks like them, that they can perceive themselves as being. And I think that we have to get laser-focused on every campus, on making sure that our students see people that could be them in the future. Good point, Ms. Bello. Thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time and doing that. I appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, fellow trustees, as you know, I represent you all in the SPC Foundation Board, and very exciting, I'm going to steal Dr. Williams' thunder, I think, but we've had an exciting few months, and special thanks to Teresa McFarland, who I don't know if she's back there somewhere, and Rita and Katie, who have held down the fort very ably as the college has been reorganizing this position, and we were thrilled last week at the Foundation Board meeting to welcome Jesse Turtle from USF St. Petersburg, who is going to be the new Vice President of Institutional Advancement for the college, and it was the staff, Dr. Williams and her team, and Jackie made a very diligent effort in recruiting applicants for this job. So many faculty and staff and administrators participated in the interview process and the selection process. I see Dr. Smiley and Dr. Carver, among others out there, Dr. Cooper, so many of you participated, and I think that the end result is really a good selection for the college and somebody who's very excited to participate. So it was a brief meeting last week of the Foundation, but also excitement, it's the end of the fiscal year, and the Foundation blew it out of the water again with their budget and raising money for scholarships and for faculty efforts, and I wanted to also commend Mike, who is the President of the Foundation, the chairperson right now. He and his wife made a personal contribution specific to recruitment and retention efforts at the college, and it really goes to show how, once the college speaks to you and you believe in the efforts that we're making here, the personal efforts to see those move forward. So thanks to Mike Carroll and his wife as well.
Yes.
Any other comments from the board? With that, we'll move to you.
I want to commend my team. I do that every chance I get. The work that the folks in the audience have been doing has just been stellar. I want to also comment on Chair Stonecypher and his being involved in the Titan Trot, that he actually won in his age group.
I'm drinking out of my winnings right now.
Exactly.
It was an older group.
He had a competitor last year, but I think he didn't show up this year, so you're on your own there. I want to thank Trustee Gibbons and Bello for the Washington trip. You know, we work very hard to meet with our national leadership, and it's not as easy as you think it is to get in. And I just want to commend Erid for her work in getting those meetings. Trustee Gibbons and Bello, there was nothing you did not do to add to what, I mean, you did an amazing job of adding and continuing to school us and help us with that. So thanks for taking the time and going and helping us make that move. The college is really getting out there, and we're advocating for us, and I was very proud of that. I'll be going back to Washington next week, and I have two other meetings scheduled during that time, so I'm excited about that. We held the Mayor Council Collaborative Lab with all of the mayors. We did not have all of them, but we had a large number of them present, and we worked on a plan on how the college and the mayors can partner and how they can embed education in their goals, and so we were trying to make sure that SPC was a part of that, and I thought that that went very well. Andrea and her team, Tom Furlong and others who were involved, thank you. You shared the Foundation Board meeting. Also attended the Lurma Board meeting this past week as well, as I was online for the ISPS Board meeting, to see how we can continue to move those DSOs forward and have them be more fundraising in nature and moving in that direction. So we're hitting that. President Genshaft approved SPC going after four new baccalaureate programs, cybersecurity, human services, respiratory care, and digital media technology, and so I want to publicly thank her for her leadership in continuing to support us. We've not offered a brand-new baccalaureate program in, I think, seven years, and so we're looking forward to doing that. And Friday, I had the privilege of sitting in front of some of the best and brightest budget leaders, our student government leaders. They did their budget presentation on how they utilize their fall funds and what they plan on doing this semester, and it was amazing. Every campus did a great job. I was very, very proud of that, and so looking forward to their next presentation. We'll invite you so you could see the good work that they're doing if you have time, and that will be my report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. At this time, we'll open it up to any public comments. I don't know if we have any cards out there, seeing as there are none. We will move on to the review and approval of January 15th Board Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
Of a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And we'll move to monthly reports, and we'll start with Ms. Gardner.
Good morning. I don't have any report this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite up Dr. Ulrich for a Faculty Governance Organization update and presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. I am Dr. Shannon Ulrich, President of the Faculty Governance Organization, and I'm here today to give you a short FGO update. So we're going to start off by going over a rundown of our current projects for spring, and then I'll give you a quick update for the learning experience. We'll have a more in-depth update on the learning experience, I believe, at the April BOT meeting, and then in keeping with tradition, I will end with a couple of faculty highlights. First on the list of priorities for the spring semester is communication. I put communication at the top of my project list every semester because effective communication requires constant attention and nurturing. In working on communication, last December, we had a special FGO Senate meeting with the deans. Interestingly, this direct dialogue clarified some issues and concerns, and was so well-received by both parties, we've agreed to continue this special meeting every fall and spring semester. During the meeting, we had a discussion regarding our current annual evaluation, the Faculty 180. Both deans and senators agreed that there were unnecessary redundancies in portions of the actual Faculty 180, so we said, let's take a look at it. So we're planning to work together this semester to make the Faculty 180 a more beneficial and reflective tool. I want to thank Professor Christian Moriarty, Kristi Powers, Melanie Payton, and Bonnie Jeffress, who have worked the past year to update and revise our academic integrity policy. We now have a robust and fair policy, and we're currently working on training faculty on this new process. We're also working to train new facilitators that are part of the process, and we're working to get programming complete for SharePoint Database, so we can kind of move from a paper-based to more of a SharePoint-based database. And thank you to Dean Frank, who's been helping us work on this endeavor. We are also in the process of revising the Student Survey of Instruction. Our revision committee consists of full-time faculty, adjuncts, and student volunteers. The committee has met three times so far, and we've discussed survey bias, which was an interesting conversation, some possible guidelines for interpretation of the SSI, and then factors that we should be looking at and assessing. Currently, the committee is drafting possible questions for our upcoming March meeting, and we plan to have the new SSI ready for use in fall of 2019. And thanks to Maggie Tims and her support team, because they've helped us a lot with the organization and getting together some of the paperwork. Lastly, our FGO chairs are working on updating the FGO Constitution to reflect current practices, update processes for efficiency, and fix a few punctuation errors that we have stumbled across. One of our big spring projects, which has already been mentioned, was the Titan Trot 5K, so that was held on February 9th at the Clearwater Campus. It was organized by the FGO members Rachel Bennett, Linay Bamy, Melanie Payton, and myself. We had over 170 registered participants, and combined with scholarships, we actually were able to raise over $3,000. So I believe the slide that you all had had around 2,200, but once the dust settled, we actually saw that that number was a little bit higher. We were very happy about. There's no way we could have pulled this event off without our volunteers, of which we had more than 40, several of whom are in this room, so a huge public thank you to those individuals. And conveniently enough, we also have a silver level and gold level sponsor sitting right here in front of me, so thank you to Trustee Stonecypher and Green Bench Brewing Company and President Williams for your support. We also had a friendly fundraising competition between the Ethics Department and the Communications Department with the, sorry, Dean Demers, with the Communication Department squeaking above the Ethics Department by, I think it was about $10 or so. We also had our additional sponsors that I want to publicly thank, Pure Molecular, Emerson and Stroud Publics, Provost Carver, Dr. Katie Woods, and the Sheriff of Pinellas County. So a huge thank you to all of our supporters. And you all already saw our green mugs that were given for the support and then one of our age group winners, and again, I won't tell you what place he came in or his age group. And yes, we are planning already for next year, so stay tuned for that. I want to give you all a quick learning experience update. As discussed at the December BOT workshop, we are actually holding our student focus groups currently. Thank you to Dwan Fox for helping to organize and facilitate those meetings. So far, we've had one of our focus group meetings, and I believe we have another slated for this week, and the rest of the campus dates are listed on the slide for your reference. We will be meeting with the Learning Experience Committee and bringing forth the data that we are collecting at the student focus groups to talk about certain success strategies from these particular meetings and focusing on those minority males. I also plan to be back in April to give you a more thorough update. And before I relinquish the mic, I just wanted to highlight some of our outstanding faculty members. First, we have Professor Greer. She is at the Gibbs Campus, and she is a communications faculty. She actually wrote a personal essay entitled "Bars" while away on sabbatical. She actually was on sabbatical at a creative arts residency at Ragdale in Illinois. This same essay was published in the Fourth Genre Literacy Magazine and was recently nominated for a Pushcart Prize, which I'm told is an international prize for fiction, poetry, and nonfiction, and I'm also told that simply being nominated is a high honor in literary circles. I share this with you because, one, it's an amazing accomplishment, and, two, the college has supported faculty sabbaticals, and this is one of the fruits of that support. In keeping with the international acclaim theme, we have Professor David Monroe. He is Ethics Faculty at the St. Pete Gibbs Campus. He is currently working towards his PhD, and as part of his work, he has written "Facing Non-Human Others," is a Leve, I'm going to have stubble on this one. Dean Demers, you want to help me out? "Leveian Asian Account of Animal Ethics Plausible." I'm sorry for butchering that. He will be presenting his work at the Sixth Annual Conference of the European Association for Critical Animal Studies in Spain this May. So if nothing else today, you've learned there is an annual conference for Critical Animal Studies, and I've reminded you of the caliber and talent of the faculty members who are the foundation of our academic excellence and commitment here at SPC. So with that, I turn it over to you all for any questions or comments.
Sure. Dr. Ulrich, thank you so much for doing a good job every time you present. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Did the people that keep talking about this unionization effort come to your meetings?
Yes, we do have.
Can I be invited to your meetings to hear?
Well, let me ask you this. Are you referring to the faculty unions or the adjunct unions or the full-time faculty?
Yeah.
No, we actually do not have adjuncts that are coming to talk about the actual union, but we do have our campus meetings that are open to adjuncts.
Because I mean, I know Dr. Williams got a piece of paper with some stuff on it, but I'm still waiting. I've been asking for five years now on this union effort for somebody to come talk to me and sit down, and I guess I'm just going to get avoided, evaded, and not talked to for the next five years, I guess.
So the adjunct unionization effort is separate from FGO because FGO, our main representation-
Well, I'm just asking because I'm at this point, I'm clearly frustrated with, you know, I just want to have a conversation. If you don't want to have a conversation that speaks to how I'm going to act on this board if you do unionize, so, I mean, I'd like to just have a discussion, so that's why I'm not attacking you. I just want to know if they come to your meeting, maybe I could come sit there and listen. I don't know. I've been asking and asking and asking. I asked when Bill Locke, I can tell you the time that I asked, was over at the Seminole Campus, and that's when this effort all started with the regular faculty members. Now we got an adjunct effort. I'm still asking, and here we are, some five or six years later, and I still, I cannot get anybody to sit down and talk about it. So I don't understand, you know, if you want to, if you want to work together and somebody's asking for information, you wouldn't give it to them, and I've not known you or the other faculty members to be that way, so that's why I'm trying to figure out when and where can I sit down and find out what people are really trying to get to.
Well, I believe that Dr. Williams, as well as Dr. Cooper, have had a couple of meetings with the adjuncts, and they've been presented with the list. We try to, with FGO, we focus on the full-time faculty, so that's why this hasn't actually been a topic of discussion at our meetings, but we do open up our meetings to adjuncts.
Okay. I just didn't know if they attend your meetings and they were talking about it.
We do have someone in attendance.
And if they attended, maybe I could come and listen, and I can hear this, because it's obvious they're not going to call me or talk to me.
To my knowledge-
The easiest person to find, I know that, because everybody finds my number when they need it, so.
It's funny how that happens. To my knowledge, at the different campus meetings, the topic of the adjuncts and them actually discussing their unionization efforts has not been broached, to my knowledge, but I believe that that's because some of the issues that they're addressing and some of the things that they would like would kind of conflict with some of the supplemental offerings to the full-time faculty, so there's a little bit of a-
Difference.
-conflict of interest in a couple of their issues.
Thank you. As usual.
Dr. Ulrich, I have one other question. Going back to the Faculty 180, can you give just a brief, like, 30,000-foot view of what that currently looks like as you're digging into changing it a little bit and making it more effective? What does it currently cover? How often is that done? Just as a reminder, because I don't remember.
So it's an annual evaluation, and it actually looks at all three semesters, so there's a summer semester to call and spring. You have to put in your sections that you've taught in each of those three. You have to upload your syllabi for those, and then for the sections, you go in and you look at your SSI data as well as your course success data, and then you write a narrative and then a reflection on that data, so that's where there's a little bit of redundancies. There's also-
And then the dean is, the dean reviews-
So yes, it's self-reflective at the front part of the-
Right.
-evaluation, and then the dean looks over, and you then have a conversation with your dean, and then the dean kind of writes up a little synopsis. You also outline your goals for that year, and then you talk a little bit about your commitments outside the classroom committees.
Perfect. Just needed a refresher. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Ulrich.
Thank you. And then the dean looks over, and you then have a conversation with your dean. And then the dean kind of writes up a little synopsis. You also outline your goals for that year. And then you talk a little bit about your commitments outside the classroom committees.
Perfect. Just needed a refresher. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Aller.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to invite up Ms. Tremble with an update on Career Service Employee Council.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
My name is Jean Tremble, and I'm the Chair of the Career Service Employee Council, otherwise known as CSAC. Hitting the wrong button there. I am pleased to report that the CSAC Executive Board was privileged to represent St. Petersburg College on the 69th Annual Association of Florida Colleges Conference. The E-Board, consisting of myself, Kimberly R. Williams, Sherrell Essex, and Carol Mashburn, attended classes, as well as co-presented a session entitled "Career Service Employees: Our Hidden Figures in Florida Colleges." We presented on the vital role that career service employees serve and how our CSAC has helped to bring about improvements in their working lives. In addition to the E-Board, we had two other CSAC representatives in attendance, Francine Fuentes and Erin Currie. In addition to their CSAC service, Francine is currently President of the St. Petersburg College AFC Chapter, and Eric, Erin, excuse me, is the AFC Legislative Chair. After months of discussion, changes to the CSAC bylaws were finalized and approved by the Steering Committee. These new bylaws are better aligned with the colleges' initiatives for both SPC and the CSAC. Among the changes, we have expanded our Steering Committee numbers from 24 to 28. The E-Board members will no longer be site representatives, but can concentrate on development, organizational growth, and sustainability. The E-Board is also tasked with transitioning in new leadership. As you can see from this slide of the Steering Committee, we need to recruit more career service employees to reach our goal of 28 members. The CSAC Steering Committee is looking to fill its ranks. There are seats currently available at almost every campus. We are encouraging anyone who is interested to reach out to any CSAC representative. Also, watch for our nomination surveys coming out. And please nominate a coworker who might be available. We need these representatives so that each of the career service areas have equal voices. Without these members, we will struggle to conduct listening posts, monthly meetings with the provost, community engagement, and more. We are actively recruiting. Lastly, we have drafted new onboarding guides. And I just was told that they are complete. And this is what we will be using to let our new members know what's going on. These materials will provide new representatives with a wealth of information about CSAC and their roles within the council. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you just recap for us, since you're recruiting, who the eligible career service employees would be on the campuses to be able to serve?
That would be any career service employee.
Okay, so from just that title?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, just as long as they're career service employees.
I see, are there broader titles or?
No, any career service employee who is a part of that classification can be a leader or join the Career Service Employee Council.
Okay.
The thing I'm most proud about Ms. Tremble's leadership is we are now a part of the state AFC, and we have leadership there. And our career service team is leading that. And I thought that was good. And then a new onboarding process, so people understand what Career Service Employee Council is and the impact in being involved. They are making huge strides. So when I go to AFC and see one of our career service staff members leading in a, in a portion of that, it's a big deal. And so I'm very proud of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Tremble, would you be able to get the Board a PDF copy of that? Or just so we can review it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we'll move to Student Success and Academic Achievement. And we'll invite up Dr. Kemp and Dr. Smiley for a presentation on St. Petersburg College Civic Engagement.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, Madam President. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on civic engagement for the spring semester. We're most thankful for your willingness to allow us to be present. St. Petersburg College has a comprehensive framework to civic engagement. And as far as I'm concerned, it's second to none. As we take a look at it, SPC is working to make a difference in the civic life of our communities. I can declare that, and I know it to be a fact. I'm here to share with you today that our framework of civic engagement is broad and is comprehensive. It includes five categories. Service learning, integrating community service with course instruction and reflection. Community volunteer service, giving time to a nonprofit civic group or volunteer organization that provides community services. Civic education, active participation in the public life of communities through non-political as well as political methods. Campus engagement, activity that is committed to the democratic spirit and the engagement of campus life. And fifth, institutional community engagement, activity that serves as a collaboration at the institutional level between the college and surrounding communities, generating benefits for both. Our students, faculty, and staff are doing a great work in all of these categories, and I declare that before anyone that will listen. I would like to provide now for you some examples of each of the five categories, where I'll just perhaps talk about one of them. As relates to service learning, here are four examples. Providing information on 2,149 students that have participated. One example would be this Safe Harbor Homeless Outreach Work, where our students are actively involved impacting the life of those who are homeless, putting in hours and hours with Safe Harbor, providing those services to assist those individuals that are in fact in need. So service learning is a powerful experience here at St. Petersburg College, and we're thankful for that. Next, we have three examples of community volunteer service, examples provided for 880 of our students. We take a look at our work, say, for example, at the CAP Center, where our students are working with young fourth and fifth graders, engaging in discussion about that which is associated with the STEM. It may very well be science, it may very well be biology, it may very well be mathematics, just working with those young people, providing a foundation for them as they move forward. Community volunteer service. Next category, civic learning. Three civic learning examples we provide for you. And the one example which is self-decided is that we make a special effort to invite civic leaders onto our campuses as they're able to engage with our students, and our students are able to engage with them on all of our campuses. So this notion of civic learning is vital and it's important to us in this day and age. Next category, campus engagement. Vitaly important for having our students engage on campus. So we provide for you one example of three that we listed for you. One example would be this notion of the Naturalization and Citizenship Initiative. We're working with those who are in fact not citizens. Our students then are able then to engage, work with them, providing for them an understanding of that great document, the Constitution, engaging work with them and helping them to understand the process of preparing for that citizenship exam. So our faculty and our students are working on what we call our Naturalization and Citizenship Initiative, and of course, we're very proud of that. And of course, in addition to that, then we also have our work with Global Classroom as we work with Pinellas County Schools, as they bring on middle school students to our campuses and engage in that process of appreciating what modern United Nations is all about, and our students are working with them as a part of that process this spring. And then, of course, lastly, then we talk about institutional engagement. And of course, institutional engagement is at the institutional level. I am proud to say today and most proud of Madam President and her work in this particular effort. She went out to the North Greenwood Community in Clearwater on last year and did a powerful presentation of engagement. In other words, it was a call for the whole community to come together. And as the whole community came together and they piled in that room, Madam President was able to get in the midst of them and engage in discussion about this whole notion, about a vision of collaborative engagement, of how we can work together to improve our neighborhoods and improve our communities. She talked about the power of collaboration and how St. Petersburg College can be a powerful force in causing that to happen. Throughout her discussion, she engaged in the whole notion of the power of moving on economic mobility, the whole notion of community engagement and academic excellence, and how SPC can play a powerful role in that. And then she also allowed every person in that place that evening to engage in powerful questions of her and the role that we can do in working together to make our communities gather together. No better way of engagement. And we'll just simply close by saying we're preparing now to do the East Tarpon Community, just like we did the Greenwood Community. She's asking us then to place a call for the East Tarpon Community, which is the area where there's some, some struggling. She's asked us to place a call for that community to come together. And then she's gonna be prepared, I believe, to do what she did in Clearwater, and that is to put a powerful vision about collaboration with communities working together with the college and the college working with them that have a positive impact on communities, propelling economic development, propelling community engagement, and propelling this whole notion of academic excellence. So we're proud about President and her work in that regard. I believe some powerful things gonna happen. Civic engagement is great at this college. It's gonna get even better. Great things are gonna happen.
You really want to follow that? I had my cup to take up it out of me.
That's perfect. I feel like I need a stand. Get a little taller. It might help me out. All right, good morning, Chair Somecipher, members of the Board, Dr. Williams. I am pleased to provide you an update on this year's MLK Day of Service Award. As you may know, St. Petersburg College serves as the fiscal agent for the state day-on, not a day-off project. We receive funds from the state appropriations as well as a grant. This year, our portion was $250,000. The total was $900,000. We started holding community information sessions in October, which we received 100 applicants who were interested in submitting for a Day of Service Award. 62 final applications were turned in. Forty-seven of those were awarded. The amounts ranged from $850 to $5,000, totaling the $166,697 that you see. On each of the applications, we asked that they provide one of nine service areas for which they'd like to focus their Day of Service event. This slide shows you just a few of those examples. While the Day of Service culminates on January 21st, 1999, we'd like to let you know that events started in South St. Pete and Gulfport from January 5th to January 26th. In addition to this Day of Service grants, we also host a kickoff event where we recognize the Day of Service. This year, the contract was awarded to Arts Conservatory for Teens, or ACT. ACT provided two shows on Sunday, January 13th, a matinee and an evening performance. Both shows sold out, and we received positive reviews from the community members. This year, the theme was looking at cultural, historic, and current events on race and inclusion through the eyes of a middle school classroom. The Weekly Challenger covered this event, and I encourage you to take a look at their article. All of our award participants are asked that they participate in the Family Fun Day. This year's theme was looking at what we are doing for others. The event is hosted in Parking Lot 6 of the Tropicana, and it's an excellent opportunity for community members to come and partake, to learn about the service award projects as we sit just to the end of the parade route. Community members could come and hear about our service awards from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Many of our service awards were actually conducting their Day of Service activity there in the lot, as well as handing out information on what their community service was about, how individuals can get involved, not only on the day, but throughout the year. As we close up 2019 and start looking at our planning efforts for next year, I'd like to share with you a couple of things that the MLK Staff and Advisory Committee are looking at. First and foremost, the MLK Day on will still remain our culminating event. And we do plan on looking at a kickoff, while it may look something different. For instance, we're looking at providing student service learning opportunities. This way, our students can get involved year-round and not just on the day of. We're looking at partnering more with the Office of Civic Engagement and seeing how we can involve faculty and staff. As you heard me mention earlier, our service awards were in South St. Pete and Gulfport. This year, we are looking to extend that countywide. And we'll be holding information sessions across the district, so anyone in Pinellas County can submit for a service award. We'll also be opening up an opportunity for our Community Advisory Board, so we'll have representation throughout the county. Finally, we want to look at fundraising and alternative funding so that we're not solely reliant on state appropriations in order to continue this endeavor year-round. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, don't make it easy.
Quick question, and it's for both of you and Dr. Smiley, so don't run on. First of all, thank you for your engagement with Pinellas Safe Harbor and the amount of community hours. That's something that Sheriff Gaultieri and I started eight years ago and really wouldn't exist without civic engagement to really holistically treat homeless. So thank you for that question. How do you, what's your secret sauce for engaging, for encouraging student participation in, in all of this? What's, what's your carrot?
I mean, the secret sauce is real, is real clear. I think it's important for us to help students to understand the value that they can bring to the table. Folk like to feel valued. Students like to feel valued. And I think if we create an atmosphere where they understand they can bring significant value to the table, there's to say, your engagement can result in clearly the advancement of an entire community. It can result in the advancement of your college. It can result in the advancement of a neighborhood. I think the extent to which you can clearly impress upon them the value that they can bring to the table, it does not take long for most students to be willing to come to the table, because they know by their efforts done right can bring value to everything that they engage in with their, with their efforts.
Sure. For MLK, one of the things that we do is we attend the Student Life and Leadership and Student Government. We just listen. What are the areas that we can help support? One of those being the float and being able to participate in the parade, but also the students wanting to get involved in those service learning projects. So we heard them loud and clear and ready to move forward.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess something directed at Dr. Williams. And I see your correspondence to Senator Russo. I do support that, that letter and, and that decision. I think it's, I think it's time, just the impact on, on our budget and overall the way it looks coming from Tallahassee. It's a good letter, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I too support the letter. I have to be on the record, as Dr. Williams didn't notice, but Dr. Law and I got into a huge fight over this because I told them that this would be a part of our base budget. And we would lose money every year. And we have continued to lose probably, if this is a million dollars. So we've done this for, since '99, just count the years. We've lost that many millions every year over the term of this project. While this is a great project and it is a good thing, I never, ever thought that we, I agree with Senator Joyner when she disagreed with Representative Russo at that time, that we should pay for service projects. I just, I never, if you volunteer, you volunteer, you raise money. And that's what, that's what service is about. It's not where we pay people to do that. So I'm not attacking the program. I don't want people to think that I'm doing that. I just, I'd never agree with the concept from the very beginning. I do support your effort in taking this money and putting it back in our base budget. We have faculty and staff who have not had a raise. We have all kinds of other things. The other thing is Dr. Smiley, step up to the mic. I'm mad with you, Dr. Smiley.
That's okay.
Come on, I'm mad with you because you didn't talk about Alpha Leadership in this effort. And I have to tell you that Dr. Smiley, single-handedly, along with some other men in this county, have been helping young men become better people. I was a part of Alpha Leadership. Every Saturday, we went, and there was a seminar on something. Will Packer, who is probably the hottest movie producer in the country, probably in the world right now, was a part of Alpha. I can go down, I have 40 names I wrote down of individuals that work every day or around, in this community and around the country that were a part of Alpha Leadership. Educators, doctors, lawyers, ministers, community leaders, music executives, TV and film industry exec, engineers, architects, CEOs, and other executives. So I want to make sure that Alpha Leadership, when we frame this, is a part of the effort that we do countywide. Because there's a group down here in St. Pete, you handle the one in Clearwater, and I have to tell you that I don't- I have to tell you that I don't believe that there is a better group in the county that is laser-focused on making sure young men are successful, from how you dress, from how you write, ACT, SAT training, to, you know, what is the appropriate way when you get stopped by the police to act? I mean, they take you through everything that these young black boys need to know. And I mean, it's not like a years program. I was in this program. I hated it. My grandfather, I hated it when I started out. By the end of it, I understood why it was important. Every Saturday morning, from ninth grade to 12th grade, a group of us were at Eckhart College. Every, I played football, but I had to be there from 8:00 to 12:00, every Saturday morning, or I couldn't play, right? That's what, that was the rule by my parents. So, what I'm telling you is, I like to see Alpha Leadership put in this. I'm not mad at you, really, you know that. But, I really, that program to me is one of the programs that could push young black males into college. Like, that's the training ground. Like, everybody that I just spoke about went to some college. A lot of them went to St. Pete College, right? I know Minister Brian Brown, who every Saturday, we were there together, went to St. Pete College and then went on to another school. I mean, and I'm sure you can talk about the folks from Clearwater that have been a part of that effort. So, Dr. Williams, I agree with your letter, but I would also like to make sure that Alpha Leadership is one of those programs that we can, that we put in this effort because I just believe and I've seen the results of that program for over 20 years, for over 20 years, that I'd like to see that program as a part of the civic engagement process because people have been paying for it out of their pocket. And that's fine, that's great, but we can go out and help raise money outside to make sure. You know, we, I said something to Dr. Williams in DC, and I thought about you, Dr. Smiley. We're no longer creating a pipeline to prison. We're creating a pipeline to college, and that's what you're doing. And I want to continue that effort. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you both. Trustees Foster, I thank you for bringing up the letter. I just want the college family to know what we're talking about. Everybody's talking about the letter. We have been participating in the Day on Services initiative since its inception. Unfortunately, the funding that we receive has been included in the college's base budget. When it's included in the college's base budget, even though it is utilized and shared with three other colleges, it gives the appearance that SPC is receiving that million dollars and using those funds for the college. And so, my letter is asking that we are removed as the sponsor of the MLK Day on Service so that we can get the million dollars to work at the college, to use it for the college. And so, there's been another request. The SEC initiative as well has asked for the same, and I have given you a copy of the letter declining that opportunity as well. Funds that are in our base pay, our base budget, I'd really like for it to be utilized for the college. And so, we are asking, not that we won't do work with the MLK programs, we just do not want to be the sponsor of it and have it as a part of our base budget. And so, I wanted the board to have this to get your approval that I did do this already. But, I wanted to make sure you knew that, and I didn't know if you needed to vote.
I moved that we accept both of these letters and put them on the record that the board is in support of not having either one of these. We'd be happy to support the program, but just not have it as a part, be the sponsor and have SPC in the state budget so that it doesn't affect our bottom line.
Right, and that's an important, that's an important point.
That's a good idea, I think.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. And Mr. Gibbons, that was an important point, is this does not mean that we're not going to participate or support these programs. This just means that the money is going to the proper place in the proper form, and we can figure out how we're going to...
Mr. Chair, to make sure that nobody is confused in the college family and staff. When something goes into the budget, the state budget, and it says SPC in front of it, that means that we are taking money against the base budget. So, if it says SPC and there's one line and we get 20 million, that's, but when you put something else in the budget that says SPC, they're deducting it from that 20 million.
Right.
You're not getting, you're not getting the same thing that another college would get.
Right.
So, I just want to be sure that you understand how the budget process works. If it's in the governor's budget and the legislature's budget and it says SPC, believe me, they're taking it from somewhere. They're not taking it from another college. They're not taking it from another pot of money. They're taking it from what you're going to get. So, and I can tell you, Tom Furlong has done this longer than I've been alive, and he can probably tell you more about that. But, to consolidate that and to make sure that you have one line, unless there's a special appropriation by the speaker, the president, or the governor, or some legislator, then you don't want to have all these different lines there to make. So, I just want to be clear so that everybody understands it. And I wholeheartedly agree. I just think, you know, we got to lean up on our belts, just like everybody else has had to do across the state. But if we're going to provide a quality service, we need to make sure that our faculty and staff and other folks that work for us, we give them what they need, and we can only do that if we figure out how to bring some of these funds back to our base.
And the other colleges that have, that's a part of the Day on Services, they do not want to sponsor as well.
Any other comments by the board? Thank you, Mr. Gibbons, for your explanation of that, and Dr. Williams for your leadership in this matter. I think we all agree it's the right move for the college at this time. With that, we'd like to welcome up Ms. Jeanette Hunt with a budget and finance update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board Trustees, Dr. Williams. This morning, I have three parts to my presentation. The first part is going to be the traditional January budget report that I give you every month. Next, I will go over the fiscal year 1920 budget planning timeline and then address a question, Chair Stonecifer, that you had last month about the non-credit tuition revenue. So first, focusing on the revenue at the end of this period. For our student tuition and fees, we brought in $52 million worth of revenue. For our state funding, $32 million. February, we will start receiving our first allocation of lottery, which will be $3.3 million each month through the end of the fiscal year. So, in the next month's report, you will see that included in the report. Next are other revenues. This includes things like dividends, interest, indirect costs, but it also includes our use of facilities. You see here, our comparison from this year to last fiscal year is about $519,000 more than we did last year. $373,000 was intentional revenue that we sought out for use of facilities. We mentioned about a year ago, a year and a half ago, that we were doing a budget realignment, and one of the phases was making more intentional efforts towards our rentals.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our total revenue at $88.1 million. This is a chart that I show you every month that includes all of the tuition for what we expect for this fiscal year. We started last month where I broke it out into three categories. On this slide, I'll briefly go through, since this is your second time seeing this, each category. The first category is our credit tuition, which is our biology-algebra-type courses. These courses are run by semester. We budget on the red line $47.9 million. We expect to receive about $48.7 million at the end of the fiscal year. The next chart is our post-secondary adult vocation. This includes things like our FIRE Academy, Corrections Academy, EMT. This is not congruent with the semester, so sometimes these courses are eight, six weeks, 12 weeks. The budget amount is $634,000. We're expecting to receive about $650,000 at the end of the fiscal year. Next is our non-credit. These are things like our continuing education for health, public safety non-credit, FIRE science, and also some of our workforce programs. The budget amount at $2.1 million. We're expecting to be at about $1.8 million at the end of the fiscal year. Our next focus is our expenditures for our personnel and benefits. At the end of the period, we're about $61.8 million. Current expense, $14.5 million, and our capital at $937,000. Our total expenditures at $77.2 million. And if we look at our revenue minus our expenses, we're at $10.9 million. I want you to keep in mind that we are 58% through the year and we've received 85% of the tuition. So, we'll see this variance narrow as we get to the end of the fiscal year. So next, our fiscal year 1920 budget planning. We kick off our budget planning for our Board of Trustees workshop in December where we looked at and presented six months of our top achievements and continuing strategic priorities. Next, in January, at the board meeting, you received an executive summary confirming those priorities with associated metrics. In February this month, we implemented our zero-based budgeting to department leaders, and this acts as a practice that dollars are justified to the strategic priorities that were set. In March, our legislative session begins on March 5. Fiscal year 1819 year-end projections you'll receive in a presentation next month. And then also, we will complete our fiscal year 1920 enrollment projections. In April, we will come to you with budgeting highlights, updates, and factors that were implemented into the fiscal year 1920 budget. In May, on May 3, our legislative session ends, and then we will also be requesting approval for the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. In June, if there's any follow-up that comes from that meeting, we'll come back in June with that follow-up, and then at the end of the month, we'll submit the budget to the state of Florida. So, the next slide addresses a question, Chair Stonecifer, that you asked last month. The question was, of the total percentage of revenue from tuition dollars, how much is non-credit to other colleges? This slide shows the total Florida colleges' percentage breakout compared to SPC. The percentages are based on the tuition budget amounts submitted on the annual budget state report. So, you see here for the Florida colleges, their credit tuition is 94.2%, SPC 94.5%. For our PSAV courses, you see the difference. SPC looks a little bit lower than all of the colleges. This has contributed to two things. One is that some Florida colleges also double as the technical school as well. Also, the PSAV courses are determined by also the region and industry. So, for example, some PSAV courses can be credit courses, but it depends on what the industry and what the folks need in that area. Sometimes they don't want to be bound to the three semesters. Sometimes they need a quicker turnaround. And then our non-credit, the Florida colleges at 3.5% and then SPC at 4.3%. Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Cole?
As a follow-up to the last slide that you just did, I'd just be curious. One of the things that we talk about at the foundation is just the need for the unrestricted dollars to come in that aren't scholarship. And I'd be curious as to, in addition to the percentage of tuition revenues and where those are, are non-tuition revenues and how they compare to the other colleges? So, we have in our budget that $5.6 million of other revenues. How that compares with other institutions around the state?
Okay. We can look into that, and I can bring that information back to you.
Just in, at some point, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have the Human Resources Personnel Report in your packet. I'm looking for a motion for approval on that as it stands.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, you say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Construction update with Mr. Miles and Ms. Diana Wright.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is one of the first, this is the first of a few updates on our physical footprint analysis, and I'm excited to bring you this presentation today. Because this is big, this analysis is big. We have 2.6 million square feet of space at St. Pete College. We're going to chunk this, and today, we're going to talk specifically about the Health Education Center. Before we get into that, let me just kind of tell you what I'm looking for today. We're going to go through a little bit of background about HEC, and then I will give you two options for not only, for reconstruction or renovation of our existing site. And I would ask that you consider those two options if you would like us to explore additional options. We can put those on the table as well today. I know over the last two years, we have brought you a couple different options. We had a multi-phase, multi-building, $80 million approach at one point, and we've kind of scaled back on our two options. But again, if you have additional thoughts, please let us know those options today. One thing you need to know before I get into this discussion is currently, we have on our capital improvement plan filed with the state, a request for $33 million for fiscal year 1920. We have an additional $16 million on that plan filed for the following fiscal year 2021. Now, Dr. Williams is headed to Tallahassee today, and she has teed up a request for that $33 million. And so, whatever you do today, I would ask that you respectfully not decrease that request because that will throw us a major curveball. Other than that, I think we can go wherever you want with this discussion. Okay. Let me also just say that that $33 million is also on the PICO list. We're ranked 10 among the college requests, so if we were to change that, we could see that number 10 ranking slip down, and then we'd have to wait longer in time for those funds. Good. So, let me just give you some background on the Health Education Center. And I want to break it up into two sites, although we refer to it as HEC overall. The first site, which I will call HEC proper, consists of 15 acres and four buildings, the largest of which is an old apartment store building, and we call that the main building. You have about 165,000 square feet in the main building. It's a 1970s building. We have a Castaldi report suggesting that that building is hitting the end of its useful life. Another of the buildings is the building that houses the College of Orthotics and Prosthetics, OMP, and that's about 32,000 square feet, and that's a newer building that was constructed in 2008, and that will become significant later on in my discussion. Two other smaller buildings consist of HEC proper located on that 15 acres. We have a lot of parking on that 15 acres, as you well know if you've visited that site. One is 21,000 square feet, and then we have a very small building at about 2,000 square feet. A total square footage for HEC proper in those four buildings is 220,000 square feet. Trustee Gibbons. The second site, if you will, is located just south of HEC proper, and we call that South Annex. That is an old bank building, an old JWB building, and that sits on about 3.7 acres. That building is approximately 50,000 square feet. It's four stories, but only the first story is used. And we have one of our university partners, National University of Health Sciences, that occupies the bottom floor of that building. That building has 200 stalls of parking, which we will touch on in a bit here. So, with that in mind, let me just turn to our options for how we might rebuild or renovate Health Education Center. We have been working with an architect over the last month, month and a half, to give us these options, and they have produced, not only helped us formulate these options, but they've also prepared renderings, which I will show you at the end of my presentation. The first option would include designing and constructing a 103,000-square-foot building at an estimated cost of $56 million. This new building would house the following programs: nursing, EMS, library, tutoring, testing, student services, and certain administrative functions. Now, under this option, the estimated cost in the plan would include renovating the OMP Now, under this option, the estimated cost in the plan would include renovating the OMP building to house dental hygiene, funeral services, respiratory care, radiography, and physical therapy assistance. Earlier, you heard me say that OMP is a newer building, so we would not be in a position to take down that building as we would the main HEC building. The second option would include designing and constructing a sixty-one thousand square foot building at an estimated cost of thirty-three point two million dollars. This building would include space for nursing and EMS only. This would also, this option would also include renovating OMP for administrative functions, student services, and potentially some other programs. Now, under this option, due to a significant reduction in square footage in this main building from one hundred and sixty-five thousand current square footage to sixty-one thousand, we might be forced into having a discussion about which programs to relocate to other sites or potentially which programs to eliminate altogether. Keep in mind that when we talk about accreditation for these health programs, accreditation is done on a site basis, meaning that if we have multiple sites for these programs, then we have to seek accreditation for each additional site that we have. Neither of these options take into account our current partnerships. We have several current partnerships at HEC. One, you heard me mention earlier, National University of Health Sciences. We also partner with Barry University and some others. We have not yet engaged these partners as to what their long-term plans would be, but we could certainly do so, and we could ask that they contribute to the overall funding of the building if they are interested in that space. The other critical piece in all this is as we're looking at significantly reducing the square footage at HEC, we want to utilize the space on two shifts, if you will. We currently utilize a space during the day, but we don't have a lot of utilization at night, and we need to maximize that utilization for evening programs. So we're looking at how that might take shape. Under either of these options, if we were to construct something new, we would likely need to use the HEC South Annex for overflow parking. And our thought here would be, leave the current building there as is. It's not being used by, by a lot of people, just one partner. So we could potentially move them at some point, but utilize the two hundred spaces of parking for overflow parking while construction is occurring at HEC proper. And we could even implement a shuttle for students if we needed to from that South Annex to the main site. Following that construction, we could look at selling the HEC Annex property. I don't think we would need it unless we develop some other option for use of that site. And upon completion of the new construction, under option one, we would demolish the new, the current main building at HEC. If we pursue option two, and we decide to keep all the programs that are currently housed in the main building, we may need to keep our current main building intact. But keep in mind, we have a Castaldi report that says that building is ending. It's nearing its, the end of its useful life. We have taken a tour of Hillsborough Community College's Allied Health Building. This is a brand-new building. We got together with the architect, and they gave us a tour recently. Diana Wright, Eric Carver, and I went over there, and they walked us through the building. It's a sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand square foot building at an estimated cost of twenty-six million. They are nearing completion, and I am told that that building will, will house only two programs, nursing and EMS, similar to what we would house in our sixty thousand square foot option. Okay? So those are the two options that we have on the table. My personal recommendation, I think the president's recommendation, that of these two options, we believe option one is the better option to pursue. But I want to pause for a moment, let you digest this information, and if there's anything else you would like us to consider, then we could do that at this time.
Mr. Miles, this is, both of these are great presentations, and, and I like where you're going. I would tell you, just listening to the presentation, on both of these, we are losing sixty-two thousand square feet and a hundred and five thousand square feet, which greatly, you talked about, which greatly diminishes the space. These are signature programs. I think Dr. Carver can tell you, I probably call him once a week with students that are trying to get into these programs. And we're talking about, we're talking about downsizing because of monies. There's a statute that was put in place, the P three statute, that allows for, for colleges to utilize the money from the legislature that they get, leverage it, and use private developers' money and leverage it, and allow us to move forward. The only reason I'm bringing this up is I'm going to tell you, Dr. Williams was around, and many of you were around. They brought us a building one time for the Midtown Campus with a, a, a center foyer. You could look up through the sky. It was all this, it was not going to be utilized. And I, I said it that time. Get what you need now, because I'm not going to be here twenty years from now, thirty years from now, when you need to redo this building and when you outgrow it. So you need to get as much classroom space in the building. You need to do all the things that you can do now, right? So I guess, and, and let me just say this. I have talked to Mr. Miles, and I have talked to Dr. Williams. They knew that I was going to do this today, so this is not a surprise. But what I would tell you is, we need to look toward the future. We got into this exact program. I'll tell you, I was on the board then. Evelyn Billerakis, myself, and Carl Cutler were sitting in Jeb Bush's office, and he told the University of Florida that he needed more nurses, that they could not get enough nurses to fill the positions of nurses in the state of Florida. The University of Florida told Governor Bush at the time to give him a million dollars, and they would study it, and they could tell him how many nurses they could produce in five years. Dr. Cutler looked him firmly in the eye and said, "Give me a half a million dollars, and I will produce you nurses next year." So we have lived up to that, and now we have a decision to make. Are we going to go backwards? And, and the other thing is, remember now, these are premium programs. This is what young people and folks pay the most for. And we're talking about budget issues, right? So if we expand these programs and move them forward, and have enough space to live out into the future and actually grow the programs, this will also help our underlying budget. So as a result of talking to Dr. Williams and, and Mr. Miles this week, I have a good friend who's a P three expert. I flew him in just to talk to the board about what P three means. I believe that we could go to the legislature, accept the thirty-three million. We probably won't get it this year. I'm not going to tell you a lie. We're not going to get thirty-three million, but we do have the incoming speaker. And we also have the incoming president that is from this area of the state. There is no reason that we could not get fifty million dollars over the next two years. Utilize that as a seed money and expand this along with that second site to create a revenue stream to pay for it. And so I'll let Cabo, Curran, Cabo, would you come up for one second? Mr. Curran is a-
Let me, let me, come on up. Let me ask the board if there are any other questions right now.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
And then we'll have him speak for two or three minutes, Mr. Gibbons, and thank you for bringing him in. Brian, my question to you is, I know we spoke of added efficiencies with constructing this building now compared to what we're using. So the square footage isn't apples to apples necessarily. Can you dig into that a little more for us?
Sure, that, that's a great point, Chair Stone Cypher. I think we all know that building construction and design has come a long, long way since the mid-seventies, when our current main building was constructed. It started as a department store. We renovated it, but it still doesn't maximize the use, the space within the building. Were we to design and construct a new building, it would have a lot more efficiency, not only within design for space utilization, but also for energy-saving purposes and other things that would help our bottom line.
Would it allow for us to expand the programs?
That's probably a question best suited for an architect, Trustee Gibbons. I'm not trying to punt on that.
No, no, I'm just asking.
But it, it's a very valid question. I think we would have to sit down with our architect and through the charrette process, figure out whether we would leave room for expansion in the future.
No, but I mean, with the current option one or two, it allow for us to expand the current programming that we have.
I would have to say that we would need to get with our deans to find out. Part of the expansion of our health programs, it really has nothing to do with the facilities that we have at the college, has a lot to do with being able to go and, and access the clinicals. And it's the clinical experience that's causing us a challenge on expanding. We could actually expand our nursing program. We could double it tomorrow if we could get a guarantee that the hospitals will allow our students to gain the clinical experience that they need to have to meet the accreditation requirements. And, and so I think that those are sort of different things, but we would, we would need to talk. And we're working on getting with our hospital partners to get more opportunity. But for the classroom piece, we could offer, Trustee Gibbons, right now, evening programs to expand the classroom piece, the challenge we're having. And, and I know that Trustee Cole is, is working with me on getting in front of the right people, is that a lot of the, the for-profits are able to pay for preceptors and pay for different experiences that the, we can't. We can't pay to get, to get those. And so we're working on how to expand that. This semester, we expanded nursing, or last semester, twenty-four slots. But we need to expand it like two hundred slots. And so to do that, I don't think it's so much does the current building that we have keep us from doing that. It's can we actually give the student the clinical experience they need to have so that we meet the-
So that's a great point. You, so then you make the point that I, that I, that I-
That you're asking.
That I'm asking. This way, a private hospital could come on campus and have their own building. And we don't have to pay for it, and they could provide clinicals on-site. We no longer have to push students to the hospital to get that clinical.
That is correct.
So, so this is why I'm saying that this, this is exactly the arm that was put together by the state to be able to do this. They knew that in PICO funding, we would not be able to build out programs, right? But if we're going to be what we say we are, entrepreneurial and provide education, then we have to figure out how to get those folks on our campuses. And so that's why the statute was put together, to figure out how to get public and private to work together, right? And so that we can move forward. So Mr. Curran, if there are no other questions, I'll let him talk.
Any other questions?
He's not here to convince you. He's not making a dime off of this. It's, he's on my dime. I'm broke paying for his plane ticket for Maine. So, yeah, first-class ticket for Maine he wanted. No, but-
Come on up, and after the, after you speak, we'll allow for more time for questions as well.
So I actually presented a few years ago at the Florida P three conference. And the P three statute in Florida is one of the most progressive in the nation. It's basically, the, the state did it because of aging infrastructure and the ability to, as you know, what colleges, universities, all over the country are suffering with aging infrastructure. And, and one of the reasons is, is, you know, and they'll tell you, they're not in the real estate business. They're not in the maintenance business. You know, all, they're not in the maximization of space business. It starts becoming a whole, you know, I was with the head of Bank America Real Estate one time, and they got rid of their beautiful building downtown Boston. I said, "Why did you do that?" He said, "We're not in the real estate business. We're in the lending business." So the hard part is oftentimes at, at universities and nonprofits is they have a very bunch of smart people on their Board of Trustees. And they, with that, they've got a myriad of knowledge from their second, or from their other career that they do, and that becomes almost their lifetime of experience of trying to help the, the university or that nonprofit grow. And so you, you know, I'm going to have my ideas, Devron's going to have his, and, you know, all of you are going to have an idea. That oftentimes leads to a time value of money issue. And with that, you're saying, well, it's, it expands out, there's lots of questions, there's lots of, you know, and as there would be, because you're not really in the real estate and development business. So your program goes long, 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 long. So if, if you're going to look at the value, and I'll give you a couple of examples of the P three, probably the first P three partnership was the Empire State Building. That is still owned. And it redeems at a ninety-nine-year land lease for the New York, the College of New York City, you know, the college, that all the colleges own that land. It continues, so when you talk about selling land, if you don't use it, you can get land lease, and that will perpetually stay with the college and not get rid of the land, because maybe that's not something you want, or you can start saying, hey, we ever grow, we can move other stuff into that potential building. Getting rid of assets is another issue that universities should not be doing, especially when you're in prime location like this in Florida. You do not, Harvard University is constantly buying assets for them to expand the university and its programs. So, you know, I, I think that you, you have a lot of value. When you bring in a P three partner, their job is to maximize the space. Their job is to make sure it is leased rented or that, or it is the most efficient space that's going to bring in revenue, and you're a joint venture partner on that. I think that with private management, I think what you have to do is now you're going to do, take on more salaries because you're going to have to get on somebody who, on staff, who is really in the real estate asset management business and the ability to, doing, doing sector analysis and doing things to say, hey, how do we drive business in here? So, give you an example, Merrimack College, and they didn't have the money. They wanted to have a hockey rink. So they went out and said, they didn't have, they didn't want to be responsible for leasing out the rink. They did a P three. Been amazingly successful on all the people that have come in to use it. I think what you also have is another area that's really good is donors. They will oftentimes say, you know, and I'll, I'll use real estate because I'm, you know, that's my, my, my career's been in that. But all of a sudden, you say, hey, well, now CBRE or these things, say, hey, you know, we'll, we'll invest in doing that because we want, you know, the CBRE, whatever, or we want a medical, you know, Abbott Labs. All those things are, in the P three space, are stuff that you can spend your time on really focusing on is what you guys are great at, is the fundraising and going out to community leaders and saying, hey, how does that guy fit into, or that company fit into our program? So I think there's an expansive opportunity when you go P three because you really can focus on growing programs, going to, doing fundraising, and really focusing on that way of how you want to grow the college instead of being in the real estate business. I just highly recommend not being in the real estate business. It is, it's rarely a win situation for somebody who's not looking to be, is, is using that as another solution. So that's about kind of all I-
Trustee Curran, I got two questions. One is, while you enter into a P three, is that if we keep the land, but you enter into a P three with a private developer, is, one, is it off the books? So it's not showing us debt to us, right?
Yes.
And then number two, there are no cost overruns because there's a, the developer could never come back and say, well, you owe me seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That, that, because those are issues that, that I could see coming up in people's minds as, you know, what happens when the developer says I wasn't paid enough, right?
And typically, by the way, that is, I have yet to run into a project that does not have cost overruns in, in my life. So that is another one of the reasons for the enacted P three legislation in Florida, is they really, the state really wanted to know, okay, if we put in this much, that's what we want to stick at. We're not going back for appropriation, saying, oh, you know, we had, you know, one point two or eight point eight, you know, in, in cost overruns. It's a very uncomfortable conversation to have, then who's managed the money improperly. So that's why the P three, you know, is in there because they say, hey, look, we, you know, it's, you're kind of admitting, saying, hey, this is not our business. We're bringing a partner to our business, and we're putting up the capital that we know we have put up, and that person has to deliver. And that person also has to maintain that property to the standards of what the university, they can't just let it go, you know, because they're, you know, they, they want to move the money around elsewhere. There's, there's tons of covenants, which, you know, you know, I know from being a lawyer. They, lawyers love covenants, makes them money. And they love P threes because there's a lot of structural things in there that gets to be done. But in, in the other way, they, they do a great job protecting the, you know, the university, where they're going, and whereas it's a little bit harder to do that with a construction firm. You know, that's just not an easy, not an easy area.
Mr. Chair?
Just a quick question, though, for Trustee Gibbons. What's your envisioned P three partner? You want to build a hospital or?
No, I think that we expand out and go back to the original plan and have those three buildings, but also utilize the other site for maybe some revenue to help pay into the P, P three funding long-term. Because what happens, honestly, what I foresee, Mr. Foster, is I think that we could probably over the next two years get fifty million dollars, right? That would be our investment into this deal. But we should- But we should get eighty million dollars worth of investment back and somebody else would put up thirty million dollars into the P three, a private developer, who would then, like Ms. Cole is trying to help Dr. Williams go to these hospitals. Hospitals are gonna go, you know, I, I was with the Walmart executive the other day. They're talking about they wanna a, uh, a twenty-four hour clinic right on this Walmart site right here, right? Remember Mayor, when we couldn't get him to look at it, right? You're going there now because it has the highest volume amount of people going in that Walmart anywhere in the country right now, selling, they sell more stuff there than they do up on the one in Pinellas Park. It is about where people gather. It's gathering spots. It is where the high-traffic-volume corners are. And if we are, we are really the university for Pinellas County. I, I, I know USF's gonna get mad that I say that. They can think whatever they want to, but we provide the services for Pinellas County. We provide more. And I go to a hospital, I always ask the nurses, where do you, Dr. Williams can tell you. I always, where'd you go to the nursing school? Ninety-nine percent of the time, you know what they say? They, they say St. Pete College or what's the other one, Galen. And I always tell them, well, you got, you went to a subpar school, you went to Galen. But the thing is, we provide the workforce in the healthcare industry. Either we're gonna look towards the future and do that long-term and be the place, right? Or we're gonna just give this up. Because what we're gonna do if we don't build to, to, to what I think we can do, we're gonna give up a whole lot of slots and a whole lot of people. There are people that come from, I called Dr. Carver one time and I just couldn't believe it. There was a legislator that called me and said, hey, you're on this board, my, in Panama City, and said, I want my daughter to go to St. Pete College Nursing College School because they said it's one of the best. It is. But the thing is, I'm thinking, why would you come from Panama City? It's because we are known for producing great nurses, like seriously. And the other programs that we have provided with that gives us kind of a total package. I mean, we're, we're, so I say all that to say this is that I guess the only thing that I would ask is that we don't change the thirty-three million, um, leave that in that request and come have Dr. Williams and Mr. Miles work with anybody. They don't have to work with Mr. Curran because I don't want anybody to think there's a sphere of collusion or anything.
I came from as far away as possible.
He lives in Maine, so he's, yeah, it's gonna be hard for...
Do P threes as lobsters on the side.
Yeah.
Are there, are there any other questions from the board specifically as it relates to the P three? And then I'd like to bring Mr. Miles back up for a couple more questions.
I have a, a couple of questions. I haven't looked at the statute and what it allows, but I was curious, are there other examples of, in, what are some examples in Florida of organizations utilizing the statute? Because I think it's a fairly new statute, right, three or four?
Uh, no, it's actually longer. It goes, it goes way, I, I, I wanna say now, I know that there has been a number of universities that have, uh, used it, uh, on the parking garage infrastructure space. Um, I, I know that, that it's, it's been heavily used in the education. I don't really know of all the areas. Obviously, the P three infrastructure has been used, uh, you know, on Sunpass, all those things, transportation. It's been very huge on... It's, it's, it's anywhere, the, the Florida statute, it's anywhere that people see either expansion or deferred maintenance as getting in their way of economic development. So what, one of the things that, the reason is, and, and universities are considered economic development. The reason is of the infrastructure issue was saying, hey, how do we get private dollars invested for infrastructure development? So as you know, in the old days, people used to have an economic development. They'd bring it around and say, hey, move your company to this area over here. It's a beautiful piece of land. You, you, we got a great community, nice YMCA, all those things. Today, companies and, and even students, they look for infrastructure. That's what they look at. They look at, hey, what's your area? What's your density? What's your, what's my, what's my opportunity? Well, that all leads from infrastructure, not, you know, not the traditional, you know, come here because it's a nice place. So I think that's the good part is you're really studying and you're really given the ability under the P three to target what you're exact, what you want to do. And that was still the same thing when you, I mean, as much boring as infrastructure is, and that really is my space that I focus on, is as boring as infrastructure is, it is the number one thing that's a driver for economic development. We used to see it over here as kind of the problem with, with the government. Now it's all of a sudden saying, if I don't have good infrastructure, I can't get businesses. I can't get college. I can't get students. I can't, you know, there's a myriad of issues. So does that answer your question? I apologize as if it's...
Well, the mayor can tell you that infrastructure and education are two things that he would hear. People, companies don't move. You don't have infrastructure and education.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great. Problem. Thank you.
By the way, let me just say this, Mr. Chair. Mr. Curran is the reason that we have the Fordham program. He met with Dr. Williams and, uh, brought Larry Longeway, who is a huge investment banker from Fordham. And we're gonna approve that program today. I think it's today or one day next, one...
We've already...
Oh, we've already done it, but that program on real estate from Fordham that we'll have in our, um, in our UPC, uh, Mr. Curran brought us that program. So, um, just wanna let you know that he's been working with the college on a lot of different things, so...
I guess what I'd be looking for next, before we dig into the exact plans as we go forward, um, is what we think the potential would be of, of the amount of space that we're proposing in option one versus a larger facility as Mr. Gibbons, um, has raised. And I'm not talking about potential the year after it's built, but what this looks like ten, fifteen, and twenty years down the line. All, all of things I know that won't be, excuse me. All things that won't be finalized and guest, there'll be guestimates, but I don't know how we can decide as a board the size and the scope of the building we want for what, what we think is one of our best programs, multiple programs. Um, if we don't have some of those projections and numbers and, and estimates as to where we can go as a college, if we have the right facility, if we have the right square footage. Uh, that being said, I think all of us up here can agree that with the building we have, we are falling behind the curve because it's not up to par with the technology that's out there right now. It's not a pretty building to look at. Um, and, and I can only imagine, and I know we've been given these numbers before. I don't have them in front of me right now, what the maintenance and upkeep is every single year, uh, at the old department store. So there's a definite need for this. And Mr. Gibbons, to your point, I'm not sure yet, until we gather a little more information, what makes more sense. Perhaps the building that is proposed for the corner, uh, that's a hundred and three thousand square feet works great if in partnership, we have a private group come in, a hospital come in, donors, um, however we look at it, and on another part of the property in a couple of years down the road, we do something in conjunction with that. So maybe it's not us building one massive thing, but it's almost a phase one, phase two like we discussed before. I don't know that yet.
Yeah, I don't know that. I, I guess the reason I asked for a discussion on this today, Mr. Chairman, is not to slow it down. Let me be clear about it.
Right.
Number one is I think we approve, Dr. Williams asking for the thirty-three million. I think it's somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay.
All right? I, I, let me just say that. What I would like to see is before we start picking one or two, and this is, this is not just like Dr. Williams or Mr. Miles, is maybe we have a board discussion at some point very quickly before session is over. This is, listen, if it takes us another too much to figure out what we're gonna do, it is not going to slow down this process.
Right.
Am I right, Dr. Williams?
It's not. It's not. We can still move forward on the thirty-three.
We will still move forward because the funding, remember, you're not getting till next year anyway.
Right.
Right? So we have a year, and I don't understand why we would force as a board, let's pick this right now when we don't know what we could get in the alternative, right?
Well, it sounds like we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah. So let, I, I would like to make a motion that we vote on the thirty-three million moving that forward in the PICO process, right? And then that we come back and we have a discussion about all three of these and see which one fits where we're trying to go in the future in terms of developing that site.
Before you vote, and then thank you, trustee Gibbons, we have to provide, and I've been asked several times, can you please show me the renderings? What are you going after? What is it going to look like? And so we have put together, and I, I believe you've seen a picture of at least phase, you, you could definitely call it phase one, trustee Gibbons, but this is what I'm carrying in Tallahassee. And I need to make sure...
That, that will not, start to control, but that will not slow down the legislature moving forward. Because if you decide to go with a P three, all you would need to do is an amendment to this and say, we are going to do this building.
But we're also going to...
But we are also now going to use the P three statute since we got the amount of funding that we thought we could get. And there, we're gonna partner that with a private developer. Here's what we're gonna get. Here's the revenue stream. It will not be on the books in terms of the college anymore, but it will also provide us a cost savings of this because we no longer have to do maintenance and all the up to...
Correct.
And all this other stuff. And we'll be getting rent hopefully from hospitals, you know, some rent. And, and you show the, uh, the community, uh, impact in terms of the hospitals bringing the clinicals to the site and that. So there's a lot of things that you should put into that, but that, that won't hurt long term. I've seen that done several times.
Quick, um, can we at least eliminate option two unless somebody really has a anchoring for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Option two, because I mean, I could, I could support the recommendation of option one. I, in deference to the discussion here, I'm okay with deferring it some. Uh, but taking the old, taking an old web city building and trying to make it an education campus, I know that space utilization is horrible. So do I think we could do, you know, have incredible expanded programs at a, for a hundred and three thousand square feet and a completely renovated O N P? Yeah, I think we can. That being said, um, if you wanna explore, and I'm game, I wanna see the data, but if you wanna explore a new option two or potentially P three funding, I'll, I'll bite. But I would move that we at least eliminate option two. And as a part of that, uh, allow Dr. Williams to present, uh, at minimum, an option one rendering with the potential of going P three financing.
I, I accept that amended motion.
So we have an amended motion on the floor by Mr. Foster. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion before we vote? Yes, Ms. Cole?
Because this is still my second, um, construction project as a trustee. And the last one, we're stumbling through still with the Student Services Building. Are these contingent upon receipt of funding from the legislature? And at what point, um, from a design standpoint, we're obviously incurring money if we start now on design and our legislative ask is a multi-year ask? Do we design it? To your point, Mr. Chair, is it a phased design? So if we stop at thirty-three million, that's all we have and it's designed appropriately? Or talk to me generally from a administration standpoint, how that works? Because I, I was not here when the first money was authorized. So this is actually my first ask for authorization.
Would you allow me to speak to that? Because I, I can't. If you were, Mr. Miles, you don't mind?
I don't mind.
I think you have to, according to the legislature, provide a, a phased approach if the money does not meet the end result, right? They won't, they won't, if you go in saying, we're gonna build a building for fifty million dollars and you only get thirty-three million, then you have to show them how you are going to phase this in. So I think you have to design the building based upon the money. The beauty of the P three, though, is that the developer has to come in with designs that they pay for and we have to accept, right? Because it's on our land. So that, so yes, the legislature will not accept, you know, hey, we're gonna build a sixty million dollar building. Because what they're gonna say is like they did at Midtown and their, and the student says, success in it, what's your, what's your answer in the deal? So you'd have to show them that you have that. So you have to do it as a design, uh, a phased design approach. Until, if, if there is a, I don't even know if there's a private developer rather than wanna do this. I'm just saying that if we wanted to really expand this program and set it off into the future, um, then you have, you know, we have the option of, of looking at that. But you would have to do it in a phased approach without having all the funding guaranteed. And, you know, legislature is not a guaranteed funding source. Is that right, Mr. Miles?
Yes. Uh, I, I, I think, I think in response to your question, trustee Gibbons is right. If, let's use a hypothetical, if we had an eighty million dollar project that we were contemplating and say if we only receive thirty million from the state, I think we could structure a scenario where we finance the balance of the project through a P three. It would take a lot of planning, a lot of coordination, but I think that's doable. Um, and the concept of P three for, for SPC is not new. When we had that multi-phase, multi-building approach two years ago, we knew we would fall short on state dollars, so we had discussions about pursuing a P three. And, um, we, we did some research. And in response to your other question, trustee Cole, locally, USF in Tampa has done a hundred and forty million dollar P three with some dorms, dining facility, gymnasium. I took a tour of it last year, very comprehensive approach. They financed the whole project, as I understand, through a P three. Uh, but there is a local example if you need one.
We have a motion on, uh, the floor, and I have a second. Any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, so moved? And, um, I, I will just say again that with additional data, um, we can actually formulate a specific plan, um, going forward. I, to, to Mr. Gibbons' point, I don't wanna build something and then two years after it's done, realize that we should have done more and we didn't do enough. So let's figure out what the best options are and what that size looks like and what the potential of all these different programs are on an H E C campus and, and start making decisions with exactly where we're gonna go once we have those numbers in hand.
Mr. Chair, thank you and the board. Thank you for entertaining me this morning in terms of the P three funding. But I think we got to where we need to is we have two options that we can explore and move forward. So I thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Curran, for coming because I caught him a short notice and he jumped the plane to come. But I, I really wanted us to be able to...
I don't think it'd be too hard to leave Maine.
Yeah, right now. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking too. But I really did... No, no, I, I mean, listen, I, I have been through this. I told Dr. Williams and Mr. Miles, both of them, I think, remembered. I, I, I won't forget, Dr. Gordon was up here talking about these, this building in Midtown with all these, you know, this grand view out of the top. And I'm thinking to myself, well, is the view gonna provide education? And that's what we're here to do, is to provide education and we gotta get as much space and, and to provide a quality space for our students to be able to learn in. And, uh, and I just don't want us to be in the same situation. I think we built Midtown. We haven't, we filled it up, but we haven't, we're not person that seems where we're, we're overcrowded. And I just don't, I don't wanna be in a situation that, that, that he's talking, that, uh, the chair is talking about that two years from now, we look back and say, damn, we built this and we didn't expand one, we didn't get one new student. It doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Well, I think we all arrived in the same conversations at the same point, like, why would we go smaller in our most successful, most expensive programs? And I, I know I had the exact same conversation, but when Dr. Williams said, it's not our space, it's the clinicals, I didn't know where to go with that. So thank you for giving us another option, Devron, because I, I'm excited now. I think that that could be a game changer.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll call up Ms. Wright. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm standing before you today just to provide you a brief update on the Joseph H. Lang Student Success Center. Last time I stood before you, it was back in November and I was requesting the approval for the Phase Three, um, G M P. And since then, Lima has gone into contract with subcontractors for an estimated nine point nine million dollars or ninety-two percent of the total package amount. And during this time, we have received and permitted Phase Three, um, construction drawings. Also, the project team is, uh, meeting on a weekly basis and is currently focused on approving the submittals to ensure that materials that are being ordered are as specified within the specification, within the project specification. So in the next month, um, the project focus will be on making those, um, utility connections, so tying in to the domestic water, chilled water lines, storm, um, and also sewage and making sure that the long lead items or the materials are being ordered. Um, for example, the glass, the HVAC equipment usually take quite a while to get on site. And next, I wanted to show you, um, this drone video of the building as it stands now currently. And next, I wanted to show you this drone video of the building as it stands now, currently, and also state that we are still within budget and on time. One of the things that we look forward to continue doing is coming up before the board and just giving you a presentation frequently, probably every other month, just so that we can keep you abreast of all the changes within the project.
That'd be great.
And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Board, you have in your packet today a memo with a request to advertise for continuing services for engineers and miscellaneous general contractors. I'm looking for a motion to approve that memo.
So, a second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Chair. Is that, what's the, the number that we set as our, our, our maximum on these folks, on this particular?
So, in the past, what the board has approved for continuing contracts is a limit, it was limited at $325,000. And so, the challenge is, within our department, we're currently looking forward to completing projects on our deferred maintenance list, which includes infrastructure projects and like chiller plants, right? Which are well above that $325,000 limit. And so, the, this, by, with your approval, what, one of the, one of the things that it would allow for us to then go into a continuing contract through an RFQ process with companies that are gonna be able to perform projects up to $2 million. Obviously, any project that is valued over $325,000, we will be bringing forward to the board for your approval.
Mr. Chair, a question. So, Ms. Wright, I thought the statute said you could go up to $2 million on the continuing contracts, right? So, you could do the main, so why so low on the 325?
I think in the past, it was limited at 325 because the college at the time was focused on trying to attain companies that would perform smaller projects. And it was probably because of the type of projects that were on a deferred maintenance list. Looking forward in the, for the next three years, I can tell you, a lot of our chiller plants, the chillers are 25 years old, they're at the end of their useful life. Just one chiller costs probably about $400,000, $500,000. So, we need to increase the limit over the 325. And that's why I'm asking for up to $2 million.
So, you're asking for up to $2 million, then?
Correct.
Which is the state statute, okay.
Correct. We are currently limited at 325. And so, I'm asking to increase it.
I thought she was saying up to 325.
No, I'm asking for it to be increased up to $2 million.
325 to the 2 million.
Right.
Any other questions?
And then this, we haven't selected these vendors yet?
No.
No.
I would just ask that we make sure that if there are minority contractors that meet the bonding requirements, that we make sure we get a good list and make sure we can get some of them approved.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda, we will take as one individual piece. If there are any questions or discussions, we'll do it after the second. I have a motion. And a second. Any discussion or questions specifically towards any item in these categories? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the president's report.
This has been a great meeting. Thank you all for everything. I just want to let you know, we have a new chancellor. Kathy Hepta has taken Madeline Mariaga's role. She is onboard and ready to rock and roll. Second, the AFC trustee conference is March 2nd and 13th in Tallahassee. Hopefully, you guys will be able to join me there, where we hear from the trustees and, and work on college-wide initiatives. And I'll be headed to Tallahassee to join the Florida Chamber Foundation Board meeting and attend the governor's reception tonight. I'm also gonna try, I don't know if I'll make it, the Higher Ed Appropriations Subcommittee today. Some of our ecosystem items will be discussed. It will be actually represented by Representative Lot Vala. And so, we're getting ready to prep him for the questions that will be, that will be asked. And I will, we'll have Keys to Manhood on Saturday, and I'll be presenting on March 11th at the Vanoy Business Association. And so, it will be nice to have some friendly faces out there. And the audience will speak half of the time about St. Pete College, the hidden gem of our community. And the other half, he's going to interview me as president. You don't have to stay for that half, but the first half would be well-appreciated if, if we could have some St. Pete College trustees there.
I'm sure, I'm sure trustee, mayor, he would love to go, I said he would love to go to Tallahassee.
He said he would go. Don't start eating, I see you eating. He said he would go.
Today.
No, not today.
Dr. Williams, it's March 2nd.
12th and 13th.
12th and 13th.
12th and 13th.
I have it on the 13th and 14th.
It's the 13th and 14th.
Okay.
I'll have Rebecca send you the right dates.
We'll get the dates figured out.
Okay.
She knows.
It's blocked on the 13th and 14th.
Okay, perfect, perfect. I want to say thank you to the board. You guys have really been actively participating, and, and I really appreciate that. There's nothing that makes a president more proud than to walk in a room with, with the board, so that you're not there by yourself and to get those perspectives. And I really value that and appreciate it. So, looking forward to the next month.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Our next meeting is March 19th at the EpiCenter. Thank you all for being here today, and with that, we're adjourned.